You're on.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Groveland zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, October 1st. Happy October, everybody. Motion open?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, way we go. First on the docket here, special permit 2025-3, 833 Salem Street owner, 833 Salem Street Realty Trust, Cara Brad Legals, trustee, assessors map 47 lot 32A and 34I industrial district. Request for special permit under chapter 50, article 14, section 6 of the Groveland zoning bylaw and MGL 48, chapter 9, to transfer the existing special permit ZBA case 2023-03, recorded in Essex County Registry of Deed book 41528, page 207, authorizing the self-storage facility to the buyer in the subject lots, MHC 351 Groveland, Mass. LLC. All right, now we get that out.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Brad will recuse himself? Let me see, totally.
All right.
All right, now that he's properly recused.
Good evening.
Ian.
Ian McKinnon with Jones and Beach Engineers. Hopefully, this is pretty straightforward with the board tonight as hopefully kind of a paperwork item. So this, as was kind of described, this project is currently an active project at 833 Salem Street. About half of the project has been constructed, and that's what this plan is kind of showing is that the middle three storage buildings, which was an expansion of the original project off of Nelson Street, that is all in functioning and open for business. There's kind of two things going on here. The property is currently under agreement to be sold to the applicant of this application, MHC Groveland, Mass. LLC. Simultaneously, the current owner of the project is submitted, and we've actually received, I think in the kind of the final stages of a major amendment, to adjust the three buildings you see hashed here on the site plan. So we worked through that with the planning board, so that's being done. But obviously, one item, in order for MHC to purchase this property, they need to make sure the special permit, which has already been granted for this site, is reapproved in their name so that it can be properly transferred. So it's kind of a, there's two things going on. We've, or I think we're in the final stages of the planning board. We're working with John and team just to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's crossed. We'll get final plans for the planning board as time goes. But this is really in front of this board, this is the only item that we need just to allow that transaction to move forward. And MHC doesn't tend to build out these three buildings once they purchase the property. So I'll keep it short. I don't know if there's any questions from the board or if...
Any questions for Ian?
When is the anticipated passing of papers on the property in question? Any idea when they're passing papers to transfer ownership?
Yeah, I don't know when the anticipated closing, Brad left, so. I believe it's, it's been extended, but it's, I believe this fall is the intent. So there's a date before the end of the year, they'd like to close on the property. Because they need to close, and then they'll pull the, they'll be the ones pulling the permits to build the rest of the site.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the last question is, from my point of view, the property to the left, I believe, is some sort of conservation property or open space property?
The property to the left.
To the left, yes.
There's kind of two things. Yes, I believe there's some Town of Groveland land, but the actual adjacent, the immediate adjacent land is actually like, there's a small right-of-way to the back of. So that label for the Town of Groveland is actually kind of separated by about a 50-foot right-of-way to the cell tower.
Okay, so it's going to sound like a dumb question, I'm going to ask it anyway. There's no side set-line intrusions at all with this property and the anticipated buildings and driveway? There's no...
Nope, the buildings meet the required building setbacks, and then we've received, the project had received waivers for some side pavement setbacks, but we meet, I think we're at the 10-foot there, so. That was reviewed, yep.
I have no more, sir.
John, anything?
Okay.
John?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
All right, is there any, any public comments?
Bill Daley, I don't see that, I can't see the spot to raise my hand on the Zoom here.
That's right.
I tried to be in person. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Bill Daley, 7 Hemlock Lane. So I had a couple of questions, just if the property is going to be sold. I know there's a lot of talk of it's acting as one, it's two separate owners, it's acting as one lot, one development. Is the whole property being sold, or is it just the 833 Salem Street part of it? And then, well, I guess I'll keep going, maybe you can ask, answer all my questions at once. And if, if it was going to be broken out, then I don't, I don't think the lots meet the zoning. They do combined, but you're going to have a lot of, over the impervious. If it's just a Nelson Street property, not as part of the sale, which goes to my vested interest in the drainage issues that Nelson Street experiences. I'll just be dealing with another owner down there because that 833 property does drain into the Nelson Street property. So I'm just curious if it's all, one unit functioning as one, yes, it meets the regs. But if we're going to break it up, then you have one lot that doesn't meet the regulations with the impervious and lot coverage.
Yep.
Please.
Yep. The first one, they are both being sold. They are still technically two separate lots. That was one thing through the original approval of the 833 Salem Street project. They were kept, it was an application for two lots, so the Nelson Street had already been built out, but we were tying into Nelson Street. So they act as one, but they are two separate legal lots. The impervious coverage, both on the building, impervious and total lot coverage, the requirements that the town requires to depict, those were depicted as both lots complying because of the location of the existing lot line. Much of the additional impervious from when the, when the project went forward was on the 833 Salem Street. A large portion of that property was required to be put into conservation due to some, some hits for turtles. So that's the, the entire backside hill is a piece of conservation easement. But those, all those calculations for impervious coverage were presented to the planning board through this major amendment and still found to be within any of the requirements of the town.
I could just follow up with that, so, agree, I agree that the combined lots meet the planning and zoning regulations, but you should keep mentioning there's two separate lots. I don't think you can have two separate lots anymore at this point. Because one lot, one legal lot isn't, doesn't meet the criteria.
Yeah, no way.
But, I mean, it's fine combined, I just don't, I don't want to get lost in, in the, in all the back and forth with the, it's combined, but it's acting as one, it's separate, we're going to keep it separate because of ownership. I just think it gets to a point where the lot has to be one because it only works with the combination of the lot numbers. So if you keep a lot with a separate deed, I don't know how, how that works because it doesn't meet the zoning with the lot coverages. It does if the lot line isn't there, but it doesn't, and I just, this is, if there's going to be a national company or whatever buying, I don't want to get into a, you know, there's other issues out there too with, with the drainage that. I just, you know, and I have, like I said, I have a vested interest in that area because it's not a question of if, it's a question of when I develop Nelson Street. And it's already, I've already been, been dragged down there for causing drainage issues in the past. And I just, I like to, you know, knit this in the bud, so to speak, but, but. But I guess just my point is, is it's not a lot, the, the way it's built out.
Yeah, I mean, we, so we have presented them as two independent lots. That was one that, when we did the original approval, we submitted them as two separate lots and had those impervious coverage broken out to show that each of the lots is compliant. They also do work, obviously, it gets weighted and it's better if you look at them as a total, but we have proven that both lots still comply. The original Nelson Street project was, had a little bit of extra fluff in it to be able to add impervious. So there's those tie-in points between the two projects, basically use that up. So we did show, we presented to the planning board and through that approval showed that we are within compliance with all the different impervious requirements. And they were presented as two different, two separate lots as part of that approval.
Again, I disagree, I disagree with that because it only works with the combination. It doesn't work with the breakout, I, I mean, it doesn't. I mean, it can look, just, I mean, it's way, way, way over, but I agree, it works with the combination. So I just, I don't know how you can have, and plus, when you have one lot sharing the utilities, parking, exits, entrances, egresses, drainage, I don't know how you can maintain separate ownership, that, that's all, I don't.
Yeah, I don't really know what to say.
I mean, I think what I'll say is that, you know, Bill, absolutely, your concerns are noted, and I will definitely pass something back, back to the, to the town planner through John and through Rebecca.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, perfect.
I, I do think this is probably something into the purview of the planning board. Not necessarily, not necessarily here and zoning, when we're just talking, what's in front of us is just transferring the special permit. But I think your concerns are definitely noted, and, and we'll, we'll definitely make, make sure they're brought up.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Any other public comment? All right, thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
All right. What discussion, what are you thinking? Any questions, any concerns?
No, I have none.
Yep.
All right, I modify a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit number 2025-03 for 833 Salem Street, owner 833 Salem Street Realty Trust, Brad Legals, trustee, assessors map 47 lots 32A and 34 industrial district.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, being seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, motion passes, permit is transferred accordingly.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you.
All right. We'll wait for one second for our board member to come back, because he just stepped out of the room. So if anyone would just bear with us for one sec.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
Is there, will they be required to combine the lots into one lot for tax purposes? Or can they keep them separate, just for my own identification?
I mean, there's nothing under tax that would require them to combine the lots. I think under planning, they would have to review to see if, if the two lots individually meet the, all the different requirements to operate under as two separate lots, or would the recommendation be to combine them?
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
Sorry for the delay, folks. All right, in the interest of not wasting everyone's time, we will, we will get going, and then we will bring him back when he decides to resurface. All right, next to the agenda, continuation of appeal of special permit 2025-02, 8 Pecker Lane Ryan Kelly Flanagan owners, assessors map 16 lot 036-0 in the R3 residential district. Appeal of the building commissioner's determination regarding the continuation of a non-conforming use in operation of an automotive repair shop, or in the alternative, request for a special permit under section 50.4.5 to allow the operation of a motor vehicle repair shop on the premises. Representing the applicants is Paul A. Magley O'Ketty. Apologies, I got that wrong. Please. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Paul Magley O'Ketty with, of Haverhill, Mass. Here on behalf of Mr. Flanagan, Ray Pecker Lane. We were here last month and we gave a full presentation. We were asked to come back, there were some questions about approving or disproving the continuation of the business. I did reach out, I believe earlier today at my office, reached out to the planning director here, and he did tell us that he found some business permits, but there was a gap for certain years. We tried, I had the family look back to see what they could do because I guess the date's in question around 2014, 2015. That's really the gap we're trying to close. It was their testimony at the last meeting that the business was ongoing through 2014. And they really couldn't find, again, to find records going back that far, there aren't a lot of us that would have them. But they did find a few things, and I handed them to the board earlier. Notice of a violation, they're really motor vehicle issues, but as you can see by the dates, they're 2015, 2019. One of them is, has something going on in 2020. They're not perfect, but I think they definitely show. One of them had to do with a motor vehicle registered to Sheehan Mechanical, Inc. in 2015, which is the time period we're looking for. So I do think that these are applicable, and they help bridge that gap to show that there was no two-year absence in the operation of the business there. And I believe that was the purpose of tonight's meeting. So this is the evidence that we were able to find in addition to the testimony that was given at the last meeting. If there are any questions of the, the board, or if you'd like me to supplement anything else, I'm here to address any, any concerns.
Thank you. And for the record, we were giving copies of these today by the, by the appealing party. We just received them today, so we have not really had a chance to review them because we just received them at the time of the meeting today. But copies have been given to everyone on the board as well as to the town as well.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything further from, from anyone on the appealing party?
That's the only issue.
Right, yeah.
The only issue is the time period.
That, yeah, that was one of the issues, yeah. Before we go to public comment, is there any, any questions on these for the, for the appealing party?
No, I have, and I, I concur, that seems to be the only open-ended item.
I have a question. So walk me through what it takes to register and keep a vehicle registered in a company name in Massachusetts.
Well, in order to keep it registered, I mean, you would think there would have to be some evidence of the company being in existence when you go to the registry of motor vehicles.
Sure.
And that's why we felt these were relevant.
Okay.
Because you also have to have proof of insurance to register a motor vehicle in Massachusetts. So why would you have insurance on a vehicle that didn't exist, or, you know, so there had to be insurance on the vehicle for the company?
Absolutely, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I guess my difficulty is understanding how you let a company stop being registered with the state at the Secretary of State Corporations Division back in 2007, but you still are keeping the company vehicles running. And this was at Rhode Island College, which seems pretty far away, right, from Groveland. So I'm not clear.
Well, it was, it was a violation down at Rhode Island, so, but the location was up here. Now, and, but there's another thing that, and we talked a little bit about it last time, is that even though a company has, has an ink on it or an LLC, if it's in administrative dissolution, or if it has been dissolved, but it keeps operating under that name, it's not afforded the protections of a corporation or an LLC. It basically transfers to a DVA kind of a company. So it still exists, and it still operates as a business. And it can have the ink or the LLC at the end of the name. However, you're not afforded the protections, you know, the ongoing existence, you're not included, the limited liability, all those things that go with a corporation or an LLC. But it can still run, and believe it or not, it happens, it happens a lot. I get a lot of, a lot of people, they forget to do their LLCs. They come to you, there's something happens, it's been dissolved for five years, something, the liability protection's gone.
Sure. But doesn't that legally then, that you're changing the status of the corporation, right? Because it's no longer a corporation, it's recognized by the state. So it's not the same legal entity that it once was.
Well, it's changing with the state, remember, there's a, when you dissolve a corporation or an LLC, you can file to dissolve it, you can file articles of dissolution. And when those are approved by the state, that cuts off creditors or anyone from suing you. That's a date certain. If you do not file to dissolve, as was in this case, then you're looking at administrative dissolution. Normally, it's after two years of not filing that the state will say that you've been administratively dissolved. However, that's not always the case, state's not perfect. So as, there are some corporations and LLCs that haven't been active for a lot longer that don't have any kind of administrative dissolution on them, so.
I guess what I'm getting at is, it's not the same entity.
Well, it, yeah, it re, well, it is for all purposes, except you don't get...
Legally, it's not the same entity.
Well, no, it is the same entity.
Is it?
It's the same biz, yes, it's, they operate under the same tax ID number and everything else. They're just not afforded the protections, like I said. All these companies I'm talking about, my clients that are dissolved, they still file taxes under the tax ID number. As far as the IRS is concerned, they're still the business. If they were to register, that's the other problem here. I don't think they continued with the business license with the city. But again, that's not legally required to be a business, right? That's, you should have it to operate according...
To be in good standing with the town.
Correct.
And you're coming before the town, so.
Correct, but it doesn't mean they weren't a business and they weren't running a business there. The only way to show that would be what was going on there at the time.
I understand that.
So that's...
I, 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 I just feel like, yes, this is something, but I'm not sure what this is, right?
Yeah.
Because I'd be looking for some actual, this is like, I...
Kind of grasping at straws.
Well, I mean, that was...
I mean, I wouldn't say that, I would put it like that, but.
But it's...
I, I, I'd be happy with, like, I've been running a business for 25 years. I have records that go back 20 years, easy, electronic. I mean, because you can store stuff on a computer, you know, it doesn't cost you anything. You don't have to hold a piece of paper, you can print that out anytime. So I get, like, you don't have records that go back 10 years, fine. This, this is not proof of the business existing, to me.
It's the best we have.
I get that.
And, and again, I'm not sure. I guess my, what I'm trying to say is, I'm not sure if we're obligated to prove or someone else is obligated to disprove, because we've made the statement that we did. And again, because it's beyond any statute of limitations or any time period that any, most people, I can, I represent a lot of businesses, you're, you're rare if you have records going back 20 years. But these weren't sophisticated people, you've got to remember that too. When you're dealing with the death of the owner of the business and death of someone else, and you got kids that are just trying to keep something going, they really don't know that any of this stuff, I don't, I wasn't around, I don't know who was advising them.
Counselor, come on, I mean, ignorance of the law, I mean...
Oh, wait a minute, I don't know what they were doing, I wasn't representing them back then.
Okay, but that's not an excuse, right? Like, that might be an explanation, but it doesn't excuse the fact that we, we don't have evidence
I would agree with you.
that this business exists back then, in that timeframe.
I, I guess I might, I state the same thing. I don't know how you can expect them to show evidence that far back. That's what we have.
Okay.
I'm not going to debate, if that's your opinion, that's your opinion. But this is all we, all we could come up with.
No, I understand that, I think that was my question to you, is that, I understood that this shows us something.
Something.
I, I don't know, and very honestly, I don't know if it's legally enough to show the operation of a, of a business, you know, in the eyes for, for the purposes of making a ruling. That might be, that might be a follow-up, you know, for me past this, but.
I mean, I would concur also that this document that you provided, it has Rhode Island all over it. It shows no continuity to anything that exists here in the Town of Groveland.
Well, there are three documents, there are three separate documents there.
I think we specifically asked, but...
But if you look, if you even look at the one from Rhode Island, the address, the name and address of the company are in 8 Pecker Lane in Groveland.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think...
So there is a nexus there.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I understand what the documents represent, right? You know, different, different transactions that happen that tie back to an address in message, in Groveland, and I think we see that.
Yeah.
Again, I think, I, I just...
There was a vehicle registered in the company in 2015, that's all I can say. That's what these show.
True, all right.
And also, just to tie up my piece of it, the determination that we have received from Town Planner clearly states that it's really in the purview of the applicant to prove continuity of business. And I, I mean, I can only state that, I'm pretty sure the Town Planner tried to all of his offices, his offices, resources to obtain whatever information we as a board have asked of him.
I don't disagree with that.
And part of that would have been to go to the DOR, things of that nature. And I know he has run into walls with that, for whatever legal reasons. They asked for power of attorney, they asked for all sorts of walls to prohibit him from doing his job for a civil entity, which is this board. So I find that to be very disheartening. Because of that, the, the position of that particular office is the fact that that lays on the purview of the applicant to prove continuity. And I think that needs to be, you know, fully afforded, put forth. It needs to come from you and your client. This, per the chair, does show something. I would respectfully kind of disagree with that to some degree, only because it's not clear to me. I'm not saying it's not, but I believe that purview is within you, you and your client's responsibility. And as far as that particular position is concerned, I still have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions for you? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'd like to open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Attorney Bo Perlin on behalf of Jason and Molly Lake. To the issue at hand, well, first of all, I don't think that, following the last meeting, that it was just one issue, I think it was a number of things. Impact on the neighborhood was unclear, nothing was offered to show any ramifications of traffic, nothing was offered to show how it would affect the neighborhood in general. But as to this issue on the timing, I just asked the board to apply some common sense. I have provided documentation which is very clear that for 23 years consecutively, this business filed annual reports and, and filed with the Secretary of State for almost a quarter of a century. God rest his soul, the founder of the business passes, this business ceases to exist, and it doesn't exist for like 15 years. This is not even a close call. And, and to suggest that a person that runs a business that long doesn't have records, well, again, I ask you just to apply your own life's experiences. I don't know any of you fellows personally, but I'm sure that many of you have run businesses for long periods of time. I've run a couple of businesses for, I don't know, 35 years, and I, I could prove they existed in about five minutes. So it's kind of disingenuous to think, well, she said it was so, so it's so, and we have these pieces of paper, so it's so, so this should be it. I mean, that's, I just think it's not even a close call. I don't, I don't think, I think more than a decade had passed, and I think that this application on its face ought to be denied more than a month. More than a month has passed, and that's all they could come up with, is, is a, is a ticket in the state of Rhode Island or something. It just doesn't make any sense. I also filed supplemental response. Did everybody in the board get my letter dated September 29th?
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
No.
The relevance, the reason why I filed that, the relevance is, it was represented by my brother, that these folks are great folks, and there hasn't been any problems, and not a peep for all this time, no problems at all. Well, guess what? There have been a lot of problems. Now, this isn't the forum to articulate all that, that's why I provided you with the documentation. The conviction is out of Haverhill District Court, presiding judge at the time, Judge Susan McNeil. That kind of speaks for itself. So to think there was no problems, and you have to get a trespass order to get somebody to remove garbage and dump that's on your property, that does not bode well for somebody seeking to, for a lenient ruling from the zoning board of appeals. Do you have any questions? If any documentation I've provided you?
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you. And I would just, I would renew our request that this application be denied, as it fails in many respects, not just, not just the issue of the continuity of the business. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public comment. All right. Board, board discussion. What do we think, gentlemen?
I, um, I took the time, I read through everything, just to kind of do a quick synopsis. There were basically five items that came up as part of the conversation at the last meeting. One was the, the position of a detriment to the area. I believe that's been answered in the, it hasn't been proven, and again, it was asked of this board, as the existing community was here, nobody stepped forward. So I feel the detriment issue has been resolved. So there's, I would see that as being an issue. The non-conforming slash conforming slash non-conforming business put back on the property, that's also been resolved from Town Planner, and the data provided through his emails to us, I believe that's been resolved, as that is allowable on the lot. As far as the major change in the business, I think John had just talked about that earlier. That's kind of, kind of still an open question, we need some clarification on that. And I did find something based upon what John had found, the Town Planner, about the property being in a R3 zone. It specifies what businesses are not permitted, even by special permit. And it clearly states that vehicle repair, body repair, and light service are not required. And I realize, that's black and white, we allow for some gray. I understand that, but I just wanted to bring that forward. And it also clearly states in a particular, I believe this is a bylaw of ours, the board is not allowed to provide a special permit for this particular item. It is suggested it's a variance. So I'm not sure how that plays in 2014.
Yeah, John, could you clarify that?
So, in this instance, what they would be asking instead of a special permit would be a variance, but specifically, the board is not allowed to grant use variances.
Yeah, yeah, we can't do a permit for use.
Right.
So, we can't grant a special permit, and we can't grant a variance for use?
Exactly. Because the special permit, like, the specific use of auto repair is not allowed in a residential zone, and the board is not allowed to grant a variance for use.
Okay.
So that would be a new applicant coming in front of the board, not a continued business, which, that's why they're trying to prove-
Well, exactly. So, so the determination is that the, the gap was sufficient so that the business was not continuing, there would not be an option for us to grant a special permit for a use to, for a new operation.
Yep. Gotcha.
Thank you for, thank you, John, for clarifying.
Even a website would have clarified that there was a business.
Anything, other than-
Yelp, but anything would, would have-
I'd ask, keep, come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
If it was a few years ago, I agree. I, it's just going back so far. And, and you know, like I said, it is what it is. But just one comment on the discussion that you just had about the variance and special permit. There is a clause in your zoning ordinance, and it's in the brief that I presented to the board, that you're allowed to go for a special permit to change a, a use. And, and that's why this whole issue of, you know, whether or not the auto body shop was there matters. Because if there was an ongoing business, even though it changed from an auto body to something else, we're asking to go back. So there is a provision, and that's what the special permit application was for, was under that particular part of the, the zoning code. We did not ask for variance, because you're not allowed to use variances, I get it. But we, we were saying it was a legal, they were doing auto repair there. And that's why we're trying to show that that never really ended, when they started to do the detailing business and the painting business and all that. So we're trying to go back. So you changed one use to another, and there's something in the code that says you can go back to that other use. And that's why we're here. I just wanted, I know it's a little complicated, but that's the way your code's written.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I don't see the continued use. And I certainly don't see the continued use as an automotive repair shop. I don't think they've presented compelling evidence that the business existed in 2015, 2016, which was only eight, nine years ago. IRS records require a seven-year retention. So, I'm like, that, I, stretches credulousness.
Brett?
I tend to agree with, uh, John. There's such a gap, and just pulling out, you know, a couple of easy passes doesn't prove that there was a business.
No.
You know, as much as I hate to see anybody, you know, put out of business, it just doesn't show it.
John, anything? I agree. I, there's still an eight-year gap.
Between, oh, seven and fifteen.
And I know, I know Skip's daughter ran the business after, but I, I can't remember the years. I can't. I'm not.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, obviously, I have, I have the same reservations, and that was my, even coming into tonight, not having the documentation that was provided, my, my concern was, would there be an avail, inability to document the continued business? But, but I agree, I don't know that in my eyes, so, you know, what's been presented really applies to that, to be honest.
Brian?
I think I got all my answers that I needed, based upon those five particular items from the last meeting. And I concur, the continuance of the business is lacking. I still believe it's in the purview of the applicant to come up with better documentation what's been provided. And this, like I said, it's just maybe because of my lack of knowledge and understanding, this has Rhode Island all over it, and I understand it shows Apecker Lane here. It doesn't show, in my eye, that there was a business existing in that timeframe. So I would agree with John.
Anything else for discussion?
John mentioned, what if they withdraw it until they find evidence?
Until they find evidence.
We've got ample time. I, I think we have to act, you know, no, no matter what we think, you know, personally, you've got to act in the best interest of the town.
I mean, I know residents had indicated that they felt there was no detriment to the business being in the area. It's been clean, it's been quiet, outside of maybe some traffic issues. But those issues were defined by the complaint. No one else had issues besides them, so, a little salt on that. So, I mean, it is, it's a hard decision, I agree.
No, and I agree, though. I don't, I don't have any reservations about the, the impact to the neighborhood. I think, I think that the residents of the street had been very clear about, about that. So I have no reservations on that.
May I have a word?
Please.
I'm Cody Baker. I'm the one who's had, been running a business there. Not really a business. I fix my friends' and family's vehicles there. I do a couple cars a day. I don't have a sign up, nor do I want any employees. I don't want a detriment to the area. All the people that have the brand-new houses around my garage were all here in favor of me last time. The only people that are having a problem are five houses away. And apparently, they have a grudge with the Flannigans. It's got nothing to do with me. Alls I want to do is fix two cars a day, so I can send my daughter to gymnastics, and have a few little things, as I drive her to school every day. I pick her up from school every day. I'm not even there six hours a day. This isn't a multi-bay functional garage. I just fix a few cars a day. I don't even want a special permit about being a garage. I just want to be able to go there, make a few dollars a week fixing my friends' and family's vehicles. And that is all. I'm not looking to run this huge business out of here, and, I mean, this is my livelihood, and that is all. I just like to say that, it's like, all the immediate neighbors, all the abutters, I've, oh, hi Cody, how are you? I get along with everybody in the whole neighborhood. I don't have a problem with anybody. And for me just to sit there and not say anything, whether you shut me down, so I can't afford to send my kid to gymnastics every month, is alls I have to say. Because once I go get a real job, because, and, because I can't do what I'm doing, using my skills as a mechanic, and my hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of tools, where I had a previous business, I don't have time in my life to do that anymore. So this is why I rent this small little spot, and don't bother anybody. And nobody has a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Well, Mr. Chair, what would you like to do?
I, I mean, the only other thing I could think of is, is give a little more time to come up with proof of, proof of continued business, but I don't know if that more time would, would do it.
I mean, they've had-
Yeah. Yeah, I mean-
Well, if we give them another 30 days, at least we've gone bent over backwards there.
I agree.
Chris?
What's that?
If we delayed it 30 days, we're at least giving them another month to dig. They've got to find something. This, I don't think is enough.
John, do you know when the, the date that this, were stamped in, by chance?
I don't off the top of my head, but I can go see if I-
If you, if you don't mind, that would be good.
Yeah, because we-
I'll shoot you a research for a couple of seconds while John checks something for us.
It's not our fault. I mean, I feel bad, I knew Skip, and I taught him, and everything else. And I know they continued it after, I know, but I don't know, I can't remember.
What was it to you?
It's up to you to keep records. I take care of it. I've got 20 years with the records. How many fishing records I got?
Maybe about 90 days from stamp to-
I think after 90 days.
Is it 90 or 60?
Sixty, ninety.
All right. Thanks, John. So, for the record, that was stamped in July 31st. And, and that's relevant, because we have 90 days from, from the date of the stamp to make a ruling on the, on the, on the application.
Can I just talk for now, one, one second? If you're, yeah, discussing, if you're worried about the constructive approval issue, to give us an additional few, few days, we can waive the constructive approval.
It's not actually that. We're required to make a ruling on the permit, on, on the, on the permit within 90 days of the stamp's receipt of the, of the application.
Yeah, and that's, if you don't do it, then it's considered constructive approval. But we can waive that. That's what I'm trying to tell you. So if, if you're concerned about that, rather than give us, so if you will give us the additional time, we will waive the 90-day period. So we will not, I'm publicly stating to you, we will not file for constructive approval.
John, is that true? Does that have to be in writing?
I, I'm not sure of that.
I can submit a writing when I get, I do it on my phone right now, I can email it to them. Or I can just write one up, I've got a notepad.
All right, that's a, an area that-
I mean, it's a matter of public record.
But that, that's just an area that I'm not sure how, with the mechanism for that, how that works, to be very honest.
Can you cite Massachusetts law that allows for that?
Well, the Massachusetts law that talks about the time periods, because they're different time periods, right? For the variance, it's one time period, for a special permit, it's another one. Within those statutes, I'm sorry, I can't cite them exactly, but it does have a provision that says, unless waived by the parties. And I know, like, in the city of Haverhill, where I do a lot of work, they actually ask you the question on the application, do you waive the statutory period? Because they know that a lot of the special permits, especially for larger projects, take longer than the time, time allotted. So I have done it before. I have waived it before at meetings, just like I'm doing right now. I have no problem sending an email to you. I mean, for me to go back on my word, I mean, I'd be losing my, jeopardizing my, I, I, first of all, I don't operate that way.
Okay, understood, thank you.
But I, I'm just letting you know, my clients will waive it to get additional time to try to get tax records, I don't know how, but, that's, it sounds like that's what you're looking for.
I mean, what we could do in the interim, just spitting on the board here, we could set a date on our mid-month date, which would, which would be the third week.
And that would be within the 90 days.
That would be, that would be within the 90 days, and that, that will at least give us some time to have, to have guidance on what we, what, what, anything that can be done. And without us going over the initial, initial 90 days. So that, so that would be-
Can I, can I address the board here briefly?
Sure.
Could somebody explain to me on the board how the rules of the bylaws of the town don't apply to this case? If somebody could just enlighten me to say, Ted, you're missing something here, this doesn't apply. The bylaws here apply.
Ted, no, no one's saying that they don't apply.
And if they don't apply, how do you go with a 15-year gap in the operation of the business and say there was no, there was continuity of operation? It doesn't have to be 2014 to 2015. From, for more than a decade, there's no operation of this business. It was abandoned. And when it's an abandoned, then this is, this is not permitted. It's that simple. It's not just about 2014 to 2015, it's about 2008, 2009, 2010, 12.
Well, and respectfully, it's within the purview of the board to allow them to, to find the documentation within the timeframe that we're allowed to make that determination.
No, I understand that. I, I get that part. I know, I understand that. But it's almost like if they walked in here with a tax return from 2015, you're like, oh, well, that's, that's enough. No, it's not enough.
No, we won't-
It's not even close.
Well, we're not saying what is and isn't. At this point, we're just saying that it's, it's our purview to allow them the time with, allowed to find that documentation.
That's fine, that's fine. And as to Mr. Ken Nizarro, that you said, well, there's nobody in the community that butts that has any problem. They are abutters. Their property abuts, the Flanagan property, it's right next to it. Of course, they, of course, they're taken in front to this. They're the victims, and all of a sudden, they're the bad guys. Like, what is going on here? This is, this is, this is wrong. This is wrong. Could somebody explain to me on the board how the rules of the bylaws of the town don't apply to this case? If somebody could just enlighten me to say, Ted, you're missing something here, this doesn't apply. The bylaws here apply.
Ted, no, no one's saying that they don't apply.
And if they don't apply, how do you go with a 15-year gap in the operation of the business and say there was no, there was continuity of operation? It doesn't have to be 2014 to 2015, for, from, for more than a decade, there's no operation of this business. It was abandoned. And when it's an abandoned, then this is, this is not permitted. It's that simple, it's not just about 2014 to 2015, it's about 2008, 2009, 2010, 12.
And respectfully, it's within the purview of the board to allow them to, to find their documentation within the timeframe that we're allowed to make that determination.
No, I understand that, I, I get that part. I know, I understand that. But it's almost like if they walked in here with a tax return from 2015, you're like, oh, well, that's, that's enough. No, it's not enough.
No, we won't.
It's not even close.
Well, we're not saying what is or isn't, at, at this point, we're just saying that it's, it's our purview to allow them the time with, allowed to find that documentation.
That's fine, that's fine. And as to Mr. Kenizaro, that you said, well, there's nobody in the community that butts that has any problem. They are abutters, their property abuts the Flanagan property, it's right next to it. Of course they, of course they, they're taking a front to this. They're the victims, and all of a sudden, they're the bad guys. Like, what is going on here? This is, this is, this is wrong. This is wrong. They, the Flanigans have conducted themselves very poorly, very poorly. And that's not, that's not me talking, that's the judiciary talking. Do you have any idea how hard it is to be found guilty of trespass and get three years probation?
Excuse me, we're not going to, we're not going to introduce things that aren't applicable to this case.
Well, it is applicable, because it goes to the conduct of the parties, it's very applicable.
And my determination is not, and I'd ask you not to disparage people's reputation in this room.
I'm not disparaging, I'm stating facts. I'm not disparaging anybody's reputation, I'm stating facts. A free year probation and a stayaway order on that is a serious thing. I'm stating facts, I'm not disparaging anybody.
That does, has no bearing on, on the special permit in front of us.
So the conduct of the parties, whose property it butts, how they treat each other, has no bearing on a permit or how it interrelates into the community? That, that has no bearing on this?
Your comments are noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So what's the next date?
So the next date would be October 15th, that would, that would be the third Wednesday.
I'll be here.
You'll be here? Everyone available?
I have a finance board meeting that night, so I won't be here.
I would.
You would? Right. Alright, we, we, we can do it with a four-person board if we need to.
I'll be here.
You'll be here, alright.
I mean, 7:30?
Yeah.
6:00? Yeah, I, I'll be here then.
Okay. Perfect.
Make sure.
Make a motion to continue until September 15th to allow time for the, the, the appeal to.
Some motion.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion to continue application 2025-02 to October 15th at 7, at 7:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Alright, next on the agenda, approval of minutes, approval of September 30, 2025 minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review John's nice work?
Beautiful job, John.
Fantastic.
You're coming along, John, you're coming along.
I motion that we adopt the minutes.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes adopted. Anything not reasonably anticipated? John, how are you liking it so far?
Pretty good.
Yeah? Welcome to Groveland.
Um, I just want to, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please.
I just want to take the time to, uh, thank you for all the work that you and your office does, and the emails that you've been sending out as it pertains to the issues with Apecker Lane have been very clear and concise, and it condenses the information down where it's palatable so we can, or I can at least make quick determinations. So I just wanted to let you know that the information you provided has been very, very helpful, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So next meeting is October 15th? Any other, while we have each other here? No?
Nope, good job, Mr. Chairman.
Enough assignment for tonight? Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:23 PM?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Goodnight, Groveland.
Uh, yep, you will be in one second, you're muted on, on the channel.